Join us in the place and prayer please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow our heads for a prayer. Father in heaven, I pray that you will give us wisdom and guidance as we conduct the county's business tonight. This Christmas season, I pray for, or we thank you for sending your son, Jesus Christ, down to earth to be our Emmanuel, our God with us. Pray that you will bless the families of Bourbon County with peace and prosperity this season. And again, we thank you for Jesus being our way to salvation. Father, again, I pray for repentance for all of us in our personal lives and on a national level. In the book of Kings, the wicked king, Ahab, confronts the prophet Elijah. And he said, is it you, O troubleer of Israel? And Elijah said, it is not I, but it is you who have troubled Israel because you have turned away from the commandments of our God. Father, this is what causes trouble in a nation, turning away from your commandments. Later in that same chapter, Elijah calls together all the prophets of Baal and the people of Israel. And he says, how long will we falter between two opinions? If God is God, then serve him, but if Baal, serve him. Father, we know the results of following after our own hearts. We have widespread abortion throughout the nation. We have perverse and accepted sexual perversion. We have poverty. We have drug addiction, many other ills that befall this nation. I pray that you will turn our hearts, create in us a clean heart, renew in us a right spirit. Book of Jeremiah says that our hearts are the wickedest and deceitful things. Nothing else is more wicked. But the book of Proverbs tells us to trust in the Lord and lean not on our own understanding. Acknowledge God in all our paths, and he will direct our way. That is our prayer. That is my prayer for all of us in this room and for all of us in this nation. I pray that you will turn us again to you, turn our hearts, and we will be turned. In the name of your son, Jesus Christ, born of the virgin Mary, who suffered under Pontius Pilate, was crucified, died and buried, descended into hell, rose again from the dead, and is now seated at your right hand. In that, in his name we pray. Amen.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Bourbon County Commission Meeting, December eleventh, five thirty. Approval consent agenda, please.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from our last meeting.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, public comment section. I try to say this every time before we start. We're having a good conversation and we can continue the conversation. If we feel like it's not going that direction, any commissioner can ask us to stop. I do time. Our rules are five minutes. But I'm saying we can't go any more than that, but we can limit you to five minutes if we choose to. So I will open the floor up to public comments.
Leroy Krueger.
Mr. Leroy Krueger, please.
My name is Leroy Krueger. I'm a lifelong resident of Bourbon County. I am the son of John and Vicky Krueger, grandson of Leroy and Shirley Harris and Elvin and Margaret Krueger, husband to Christina, and father to three, Austin Krueger, Jordan Holdridge, and Lexi Krueger, and four beautiful grandchildren. I have came, come before the commission today to announce that I will be running for a position of sheriff in two thousand twenty-four election. I'm a former chief deputy with the sheriff's department. My promises, not goals, will be to lower the budget, bring peace and unity back to local government. And just wanted to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Troy Felton. Yep, see Troy.
Troy.
You probably heard my little statement about the five minutes. If it gets out of control, we can stop it.
I'm sorry.
I am too. I am too. You know that, Joe.
Yeah.
All right. You have the floor, sir.
Guys, again, I, I turned on feed in the feed truck in the morning, turned on the radio and heard you talking about what happened last week. And I really don't get in detail trying to pay a lot of attention. But again, I go back to this Medicaid expansion. And gentlemen, we cannot maintain long-term healthcare in Bourbon County with this emergency rule. We all know when it's emergency, what a third of it gets wasted, a third of it goes where it needed, and a third goes in somebody else's pocket, basically. It's just not sustainable and subsidizing this emergency room. I want our hospital back. I don't just want an emergency room. We don't have to subsidize. I want our emergency room, our hospital. With the Medicaid expansion, we got a shot. I talked to my nephew again, and like I said, he talks over my head real fast. But the best I can make out of it, Medicaid expansion basically is where the hospital does work on somebody. They don't make any money off of it, but they don't lose money like they have been for years and years and years. Jim knows that. So it broke our hospitals. The Medicaid expansion is that. That's all Medicaid, that's all Obamacare ever was, was a way to pay for our healthcare. It really wasn't about healthcare. It was a system that when the government mandated healthcare back in the eighties, they never set up a way to pay for it. And that's all it ever was. They dabbled with the politics with it. They come up in the nineties, they tried to do something. Hillary's, as first lady, that was her big cause. And when you went to pay for it, you had to put it in the government, or you went in the free market. Pick your poison. Pick your poison, gentlemen. And when, and she passed it this way, she wanted it this way, the Republicans come with this way. This is what we call Obamacare today, minus the mandate. Back in the day, they wanted the mandate, Jim probably remembers this, that the mandate was to get everybody a personal responsibility for their own healthcare. That was their chirp. Then when they get their way, they cut the mandate. But nonetheless, this is our way to get our chance at the hospital back. We can either sit here for another fourteen years. That's how long it's been since Obamacare has been passed. They've had plenty of opportunities to fix it. They are not going to fix it. They're not going to repeal and replace it. You might as well just figure that out. If you believe that, I need to say yours. I mean, seriously. Guys, we can either sit here and wait on the federal government to allocate how much money we get to maintain our healthcare here in Bourbon County, or we can sit over here and have maybe some hospitals come in here with some competition because they're not going to lose their ass, their butts when they're in here. We can get some competition in there. We got a chance to do that, where everybody's, it's more of a free market deal than this, sitting over here waiting on the federal government to come up with the emergency rule healthcare money just to subsidize our damn emergency room. Guys, we need this Medicaid expansion. We needed it a long time ago. Like I said, it didn't what broke them. Obamacare didn't break our hospital. Playing politics with it. If we either took that back then, we'd still have a hospital. And I believe we can do that again today. There's a, I think it's just silly that it's been, and it is silly. Like I said before, it's all over this stupid politics. It's just dumb. And people need to accept the fact that they're not going to change it. And this is the way it's going to be. And we can either sit here for another fourteen years and watch our healthcare deteriorate away like we have for the last fourteen. You know that. Or we can do this and get a chance to get a hospital back. And I mean, I know they want to tie it to social issues and everything else, just playing politics. But gentlemen, you think they're standing on their conservative values up there, you told me. I think they're feeding you full of crap, and here's why. When Jim said nobody out west is saying nothing, I called some neighbors out there. One of the people I called was Big Brian out there north of Bronson. It's on the school board. I said, Brian, in the conversation, I said something about the deal they was trying to pass out there, the nine million dollar tax increase. And he, I said, whose idea was it out there, Brian, to put a daycare in out there at that school and the taxpayers pay for it? I said, that's not my job as a taxpayer to pay for damn babysitting service, daycare, preschool, whatever you want to call it. I said, that's always been the private sector. Who put that in the, in the school district out there? He said, well, the state of Kansas mandated it. Now, I knew Brian for a long time, and he may be lying to me, he may be misled, but that's what he told me. He said, we got a four-year, and he said, we got to have a four-year-old special needs or something like that. And he said, now they're coming at us with a three-year preschool. And he said, you try telling a bunch of parents. Now, I don't know what that sounds like to you, but that sounds like another entitlement program as far as I'm concerned. This shouldn't, and I know healthcare, daycare is hard to find, but it's not the taxpayer's job as far as, but nonetheless, that didn't get through that legislature out there without them, I don't think. And if they did, I don't know how, because I'm no politician. They dug around, tried to figure out how they got passed because I couldn't understand it right and know how. But son, they fed us full of crap for fourteen years, and we sat here and watched this hospital go down the crapper. And, you know, I was up here kind of wondering why them phone numbers ain't out, why they're more well-known. It ain't going to do us no good to call them politicians, people like me. Hell, that's like trying to ride a dead mule. This ain't going to get you nowhere. There really ain't. But we need this in our community so that at a minimum, we want to have subsidized that damn emergency room and a shot to get our hospital back. When I asked my mom and nephew about it, I said, what's our chances of getting it back? I said, well, it depends on what they pass. He said, and he started in on, well, there we go, Kansas is this, but I said, whoa. I said, you got to dummy it down. He said, well, basically, if they pass a good Medicaid expansion bill, you got a real good shot to get hospitals down there. He said, I know for a fact they got money.
During the commission comments, we're going to talk a little bit about what we think the federal government's doing and the state's doing.
Well, guys, I understand what Mr. Moran and all them are doing up there, but like I said, that's not the answer.
We'll, we'll explain our pathway to a hospital, if possible.
Through this emergency room.
I don't want to get into the public comment section, but.
Well, what's it going to take for you guys to get out and call these politicians out publicly that we want the Medicaid expansion?
Well, how do you know we haven't?
Well, I don't know.
You haven't been to my house. You don't know who I call.
No, I mean, I mean, I'm talking about on Channel Seven.
Yeah.
And in the newspaper. Have you done that? You know, guys, I'll be honest with you. When we bring this emergency room up around town, you guys ain't very popular. I mean, I know, and I know that comes with the job. And then you can sit there and say, well, it don't bother me, but it's got to bother you. But it bothers me. I don't like to call my neighbors. You know, the hatefulness is just stupid. I don't believe he's a thief. Clifton's my friend. He's no thief. I don't believe you're a thief either. But there's a lot of people hollering that whole hateful shit around, I'm sorry, the hateful stuff around them. And I think if you guys come out against this thing publicly, like I said, with some force, at least you're going to stop some of the haters saying you guys ain't filling your pockets out of these subsidies, which again, I do not believe. But anyways, guys, this is what we need.
All right.
But you guys ain't going to do it.
Give us a chance to talk during our time, and we'll tell you what we're doing.
Guys, it's important.
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks, Drew.
Good evening, Mr. Griffin.
Well, good evening. I assume this is on.
The red light's on.
Yeah, the red light's on.
They're on.
Dell Griffiths, Bourbon County resident my whole life, western Bourbon County. And I don't have any boring topic like that that I really wanted to discuss with you guys tonight, but I did want to come forward and, and voice my opinion on one matter. I am one of the ones that watch every commission meeting on the YouTube channel. I go back, follow every one of them. And the one topic that I do, would like to discuss is the matter of how constituents are treated when they come in here and they have a differing opinion. It comes across not very nice. It comes across that our commission treats its constituents as smaller or low, lower class than them when we have a differing opinion. And my only ask is that maybe keep that in mind in the future. I understand that things can get heated, things along that line. But just because someone is questioning what the commission is operating on, or if they come up with differing facts than what you know, doesn't mean that we should belittle them in this format. And that's the only thing I'm asking for.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Keep up. Good work.
Anyone else clipping? That it? We'll close out the public comment section. Special guest senator, Tim Schomburger. Is he in the house? Tim, you're on the board, Tim. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
How are you?
Some of these questions making it.
I got here. I met, I met some, my name's Tim Shalamar. I'm the state senator for the thirteenth district. And, and I've been meaning to get up here, except I had a nice round case of COVID. And then I got the RBS, and so it's been a kind of a, been kind of a bad fall for me. I, I, I haven't been here since I got elected. I was elected in January to replace Hildebrand, who was the state senator before then. And so I just thought I'd come up, tell you who I am, introduce myself, answer any questions. And because the legislative session's about to start, Medicaid expansion will be one of those topics. I'm sure that, I'm sure that comes up. My name is Tim Shalamar. I'm from Baxter Springs, Kansas. The thirteenth district, as you know, is all of Cherokee, all of Bourbon, and all of Crawford County. Bourbon County isn't all in the thirteenth district today, but it will be in the next term. Starts next January. I was a banker by profession. I was in the legislature in the nineties. Was state treasurer for a while. Anyway, I'm a banker. I resigned, retired, went home, and was a banker. Went back and did some work when Brownback was governor, was president of the Kansas Development Finances. And we did bonding for the state. And then I was mayor until in Baxter Springs. So I understand local government and all the ins and outs of that until January, when I was elected by the precinct people to replace Hildebrand. I don't have an agenda here for you tonight, but I, but I will touch on, since I was waiting out there, I didn't know if you had any seats, I will touch on stuff that is coming up. Medicaid expansion will, will come up. I know you've had a, I know you, we've got, we've got a problem with hospital here. I've talked to some commissioners about that previously. We knew it was going to close, or it's, I think it's now closed, isn't it? Has it totally?
Hospitals.
Yeah, closed. And, and it's, it's happening all over the country. Medical, medical, the delivery of medical services has changed a lot in the last decade. The advent of health clinics, health clinics have taken the places of doctors. You don't have doctors. They all belong to hospitals now. And so it's just, it's just the, the delivery of healthcare has changed a lot. I have had conversations with, with CHC about emergency room. I've had conversations with Freeman about emergency room. I've had a conversation with commissioners about it. And I've had conversations with Moran, and I know he's got a bill introduced to try to, try to get some done, stuff done federally. It's a slow, slow process. That's a slow, slow process. So we'll put, we need to put our thinking caps on. We need to, to try to come up with something. But people are being provided regular service. The problem you have here is emergency service will be a problem. If you have a car wreck or somebody gets hit in the head, where do they go other than a twenty-five minute ambulance trip? That, that's coming up. Taxes are coming up again next year. There will be a variety of changes offered, both on income and property tax reform at the state level. We passed two bills last year, and I got there in the middle of session. They both got vetoed because they had strings in them that the governor didn't like. And I think, I think we can compromise, the legislature can compromise. We'll get, we'll get income tax relief, and I also think we'll get some property tax relief, not at the expense of cities and counties. I'm, having been a mayor, I'm pretty, I'm pretty compassionate when it comes to the problems local governments have in funding yourself. The legislature gives you things to do, and then they slap your hands if you try to, try to raise any taxes to do it. And as we eliminate sales tax on food and things like that, we've tried to make sure that it didn't have any negative impact on you. We also need to make sure that if we're going to continue to have the revenue neutral rate plan the way it is, that the state continue to pick up the tab. Somebody pick up the tab for the letters, either that or we go back to public, public notice. I don't know how many people you had show up. You should have had your, your meeting back in September, October for that. I don't know how many people you had show up, and I don't know what you did to your mail levy. But I know in Baxter Springs, nobody showed up. At county, nobody showed up in Cherokee County for that. So spend a lot of money sending out letters to everybody, and they, they don't, they don't seem to show up for those. If you have any questions of me, I'll be, I'm your state senator, whether you like it or not, for, for, for the next session starts in January. I know, I know all, all that's going on up there. So I mean, I don't have a, I'm on the transportation committee. There are some things that I think that we've, we've, I've had conversations with Shane and, and, and some city people and some county people. I know that we have, we have some problems with railroads blocking traffic. So we need to talk to KDOT about that. I know you've got an overpass over a railroad viaduct up north of town that's crumbling. I think we need to talk to KDOT about that. We do, we need to work on the hospital stuff. We've had a plan that we've been talking about, that's been talked about for a long time down here, about a lake. That's, that's a long time. Takes a long time to do stuff like that. But water is a problem. I don't know if you know Kaney, you know, is out of water. And if you don't have plenty of water, you, you can have a problem. And the planning for that has to happen a long time out. So those are all the things that we're working on. If you have anything you need from us, if you have anything you need from the state, the state has grant programs that we need to participate in. I'm a pretty conservative fellow, but I don't believe that we should, because I'm conservative, we shouldn't try to get everything that we can. When you're from Bourbon County, Kansas, everything we can get from the state, we should take because we're paying in a lot less than we'll be getting out. We're not high, even though we pay a lot of tax. The community college is probably on the, on the topic again. I know the president of the senate is concerned about mail levies for property taxes. Or if you have a community college in your district or in your county, all the, all the people who have community colleges, their property tax is just killing them. And, and Fort Scott's no exception. You're one of the highest property tax rates in the state. And so he has some plans to try to buy down those mail levies. I don't know what the plan is, but he, he called me the other day about it. I don't want to take up all your time, and I got a lot of work to do. If you have any questions of me, go right ahead.
Do you think the governor, governor will be successful in this Medicare expansion? I know she's really pushing.
Well, you know, she might be. The, the problem, I'm not sure, I haven't seen the bill, so we don't know what she's proposing. I had a conversation with her and her staff about it a couple of weeks ago. As a matter of fact, we were talking about Medicaid expansion. I was meeting with her, her staff. And when we heard Timken was going to close, I mean, you get the call, whatever it's called here in Fort Scott. I said, good grief, that's another, Fort Scott's not having a good week and not a good, not a good year. So it depends on what it looks like. There's probably enough votes. There may be enough votes in the senate to pass it. I'm not sure they're on the house. The, the speaker of the house really doesn't like it. And if the speaker of the house doesn't like something, it gets really hard to move it. He has to work it. He has to put it in a committee, and he has to get votes. And if he doesn't want to put it in committee, and if he doesn't want to work it, it sits there and has to pass both sides. So it's complicated, and I, I had conversations with her about her staff. I haven't talked to her directly about it, about how she intends to work around that. Before I make any commitments, I want to know how she plans to get it done and what she plans to put in it. So. I, I don't know. I don't know. I, I would, if I were betting on the bill passing, I'd bet against it. But all the way through, but she, she's got a lot of bullets in her gun. She, she can do a lot of things.
No, I, I, I think it's disappointing, and I'm not doing this to you, but both, both sides used our hospital, our ER closing as political capital. That, I find that really disappointing, the president of the senate and the governor. I think it's disappointing that they both jumped on the bandwagon and talked about it, but nobody's offering any help. I, I find that pretty disappointing.
Well.
From our legislators up there, I know Troy just sat there and talked about doing Medicaid expansion, but both, when both sides want to use it as political gain, and I'm not saying you, sir, at all, because your name was not on those letters that were sent out all over social media. And it was this president and the governor. And I find that really disappointing that they wanted up there, stand up there and do that, one for Medicaid expansion, one against it. And said, we're going to do this, but I haven't seen, I haven't seen anybody do anything. And I find it disappointing. And so I, and again, I appreciate you coming, but I don't put a lot of faith in Topeka.
Well, I, I can understand, I can understand that. The, the, the reality is, and I, the reality is Medicaid expansion, if we pass it tomorrow, wouldn't open a hospital in Fort Scott.
I agree with that.
It's a capitalist, we, we live in a capitalist society, and, and there has to be enough revenue generated, or unless you want to pick up the tab yourself, there has to be enough revenue generated to make it work. And hospitals don't work anymore. Doctors don't refer people for week stays in hospitals. They go to surgery centers. The, the hospitals that own the doctors or by their contracts, refer them to themselves Freeman. You know, they, they own the doctors, so the doctors refer to Freeman. I think that, I think that if they're, if you, I would, I would think that the best thing that you could do here is, is, and I'd be happy to intervene or go do this, is have a conversation with Gerard.
I have.
Have you?
Yes.
And they're not interested at all in anything?
They can't because of their critical access designation.
Well, I think they can.
You better talk to her.
Well, I mean, they, they could have two hospitals in one town. It's, you just can't, you can't infringe upon their area. It's their area. I think it's their catchment area. And so I, I would think that would be, it's just hard. It's hard to make, it's hard to make, it's hard to make a hospital come into a town that, that, that is so close to regionals that, you know, and I, I don't know. We, we need to work on it. We need to work on it. And I know you have been. So we'll see what's happening. But I'm, I'm not sure Medicaid expansion, if, maybe if it would have passed ten years ago, might have, would have helped keep it open, but I don't think passing it tomorrow would, would open it.
Question, Nelson?
Thanks for coming, Senator.
Well, you're welcome.
Thank you.
I will give you a card. On the back of the card is my cellphone. And my personal email, and my emails are out there.
We appreciate you visiting the KDOT about some of our problems.
Yeah, and you guys probably should let me know if, if you have a list of things you want to do. There, KDOT, I think you'd have luck with KDOT getting some things done. They have money right now. Their budget's pretty, pretty right, and, and they're looking for things to do. So if you, if you have ideas about KDOT projects.
Appreciate you coming.
You bet.
Thank you.
You bet. Good to see you.
We appreciate all the help we can get in Topeka. Okay, thank you. Department updates. Come in, Mr. Bailey. Public works. Are you?
Make it real quick. Purple Wave was here today. Got all the information on the two cat loaders. They will be selling January ninth. They will be selling January 9th on the government auction. So just kind of keeping you updated on that. Last week had a, oh, it was on Kansas, just east of 130th, had a water crossing or a hand laid rock structure, corb start to collapse. So anyhow, it's in floodplain. It's going to take in a large area. So we're having a hydraulic study done, working with ag engineering so we get the proper permits from the state. And we have barricades up. Still get down the road, it's just on one side, so.
How big a hole was there? I mean, I mean the pipe.
About a seven foot across, but it's half, two halves. So we're trying to get the.
For good size, a lot of water.
Yeah, a lot of water, so. But got to do the hydrology study to see how much area it does take in. And it appears like it's using the whole area, getting water moved from one side of the road to the other. So just letting you know on that, that's coming up. We did have a solid waste compliance inspection at the landfill on November 29th. We did have one violation and that was, we had a fire. The soybeans caught fire one evening and anyhow, we got the fire put out or what have you, but we did not get KDHE notified in time. So that was our one violation. It has been corrected. They were here on the 29th and it was corrected on December 1st. So anyhow, just letting you know on that, we did, did receive that. Other than that, they were very pleased with everything at the landfill, thought everything looked really well. And so we are moving forward. Friday, we received our trailer that was on order for our special bridge. It is in, at the yard and we'll be getting insurance and tags and all that good stuff taken care of. And we'll get it put out in the fleet. And then last but not least, the guys wanted me to thank you for longevity pay and for the holiday meal that we had last Friday. They really did appreciate that, so.
It was a great gathering with them, pretty good food.
Yes, it was.
And a good group.
Yes, yes. So, and that is all I have. Anything for me?
Tell them guys, thank you for doing a good job.
Okay, I will.
That's, that's what, how people get longevity pay and Christmas lunches and stuff like that. So my opinion only, so. I don't have anything.
I'm good.
Good enough.
Thank you, Eric.
You bet.
Terry Oly, EMS director. Have a seat, please.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I just wanted to come let the community know. We've had a lot of phone calls, a lot of questions in the community. For some reason, the community thinks EMS is going away too. We're not going anywhere. We're going to be here. I did notice that the marquee is off at the entrance of the hospital. I talked with Rob, apparently it's off. It's not going to be back on. They don't have the computer to turn it back on. So I'm going to check what CDL or Darren Craze to see about getting a sign out there, maybe just a vinyl sign that we can put on stakes. So that they know that we're there.
Good. We appreciate you coming because John called me Sunday after church and we did visit. Very important that you come here and tell our citizens.
Yes.
That you folks are not going anywhere. And I'll be on the radio in the morning and I'll repeat it, that our citizens, that our EMS is not going anywhere.
No. We'll go where you need to go.
Nowhere to go.
I will, I do want to clarify because one thing, I did have some questions in the phone calls that I've received about where we will transport. So with that being said, we will transport to the closest ER, depending on where we pick you up at. You know, we, we were asked, well, what if we just want to go to Kansas City? We can't do that. We'll have to take you to either Nevada, Iowa, Gerard or Pittsburgh. And then if it's deemed that you need to go elsewhere, then that doctor there will make that arrangement. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I think, kind of clarify that, Terry, that, that you are, you have to take them to the closest appropriate emergency room.
That is correct.
That's, the decision is made by your paramedics.
That is correct. That is correct. That, that.
Please make that statement and clarify that.
The decision will be made with our paramedic that is on the truck. You know, whatever you call, the reason you call for will determine where you're going and our paramedic on the truck will make that decision.
To the nearest appropriate.
Nearest appropriate ER. Yes.
It's not by the mileage, it's appropriate.
No, appropriate, that is correct.
That makes lots of sense, Eric.
Example, if you have a cardiac issue, which means your heart, you will go to Pittsburgh.
I had a family member recently had that, as you know, and we asked about Nevada, they had no cardiologists on staff, so we went to Pittsburgh.
Go to Pittsburgh.
That's great. Did a great job down there. And by the way, your folks did a great job too, so.
John, do you have anything else? Are you thinking of anything else? Yes. So with the ER closing at, on December 20th, and they will be taking the last patient, be it a walk-in patient or an ambulance at 10:00 PM that night, effective December 20th at 10:00 PM that night, we will be implementing an all-call. When I, what I mean by that is, we have two trucks that are manned 24/7 at, at our station. The minute that second truck goes out the door, either the paramedic on that truck or myself will notify dispatch to send out an all-call, just like they do for the fire department when they have an all-call. We receive that over our phones. You will respond, our staff will respond to the station. At that point, they will notify dispatch, we have a crew at the station. And they will stay until they're released. To make, to ensure that we have complete coverage for the county.
Now, do you have the ability to have a second phone call for staff wise if you needed it?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's great. That's good news, so. That's big news.
Still fully staffed, so.
Really?
And if I have to pick up the phone to call people in, that, that's what I'll do too, so.
Well, I'm confident that you folks will protect our citizens and do a great job.
Yes, we will.
I don't worry about that at all. Again, I had a family member a few weeks ago and everything was perfect. Everybody did a great job, so.
Nelson, any questions, comments? Thank you, Terry. Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Shane Walker. Morning, good evening, Shane. It's not say good morning, how are you?
We need to have an executive session, talk about our software problems that we're Fall under your security.
Sure.
I think it's marked as B4, but I think it's a security one that's different. I don't, I don't have in front of me. I know it's small writing.
B12.
Yep.
Security measures? How much time?
Five minutes.
You, three and Justin.
And you? Make a motion to go into executive session, KSA 75-4319B12 to discuss matters relating to the security, to the security measures if the discussion of such matters at an open meeting would jeopardize such security measures. Three commissioners, Shane Walker and Justin Meeks, for five minutes. We return here at 6:14.
Second.
And a motion, a second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to resume normal session, no action.
Second.
And a motion and second, in discussion, all in favor, aye. Justin Meeks, please.
Aye.
There could potentially be action after this executive session. For the first one, I think we need to go on for at least 15 minutes. We actually might have to go back, come back out and go back in. I'm asking for B4, which is proprietary, three commissioners, Mr. Harrington and myself.
Okay.
All right, did he say 15 minutes?
B4.
Okay, all right. All right, I make a motion to go into executive session, KSA 75-4319B4, to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trust and individual proprietorships. Going to be for 15 minutes, three commissioners, county councillor and Rob Harrington return here at 31, 6:31.
I second it.
Oh, sorry, second.
And a motion and second, any discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to resume normal session with action.
Second.
And a motion and second, any discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
You have the floor, Mr. Meeks.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd ask that Mr. Harrington, Rob Harrington, be given permission to coordinate an emergency meeting between the city commission and the five commissioners, the city manager and Mr. Farmer, their attorney, and then the three county commissioners, myself and Mr. Harrington, to go in for executive session for B4. And then that meeting will probably take at least a half hour, at least a 30-minute executive session. I know that two of the commissioners at the county level work, you know, are hard to get as time, so we, probably a night meeting if best, or we can have all the commissioners call in because it's that important. I would ask that if, after that meeting, if we have to go back into another executive session or have another date from that meeting, we can have that emergency meeting also, because today's Monday, obviously, and we need probably have it within the next day or two, and then if we need another one, we can do that, too.
Justin, can we add the possibility of the US City Ball Council?
City Ball Council if need be.
And I'm out of town Friday, so I'll get everything else.
Sure, I know that Commissioner Beth is out of town on Friday, too. So, that's why I brought those days. If you guys need to phone in, we will have that ability, so.
You make that, I'll be here.
So I guess to protect coma, you want to make sure that you ask for multiple meetings if need be, and that you'll be conducting county business, but you'll go right into an executive session with people named under B2 for executive session.
But when we make that motion at the start of that meeting?
You will, to protect yourself, I recommend that.
But I don't need to make one right now.
Well, you're going to probably meet, though, so when you publish.
So I would make a motion that we will have an emergency meeting sometime in the next more.
Before the next commission meeting.
Before the next commission meeting, possibly, I guess.
You could have multiple, but.
With, and anyway, I guess that, I don't know what else to say at this point.
Well, the reason I'm covering it is, is that you're going to, Jennifer's going to put a notice out once the meeting's set, and so just if you cover your bases by saying it's going to be conducting business for the county in executive session with these five people, you can still open the meeting up and do like we've done in the past, but it just lets people know.
And it will, so that meeting, if, so continue my motion, if this emergency meeting happens, it will, it will consist more than likely of executive sessions concerning, and more than likely B4, KSA 75-4319B4, which we will make that motion at the start of that meeting if it needs to be done.
Second.
And a motion and second, any discussion?
Yeah, I guess discussion Tuesday night, which is tomorrow night, would be great for me, but.
Yeah, I can make Tuesday, Wednesday night work.
Yeah.
Or Thursday night, actually.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, all three, just whatever.
I could do Wednesday night, too, yeah.
You hear that, Justin?
Okay.
Actually, Wednesday night would be even better, but I could do Tuesday night or Wednesday night.
We're talking like Tuesday, Wednesday night, good for everybody, maybe.
Yeah, obviously, we have to get permission from the city, and we'll do as best we can. We're just trying to have a couple of commission meetings or have an emergency meeting between now and the next commission meeting for you guys on Monday.
Okay.
Any more discussion? And a motion and second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Anything else, Justin?
He's over there.
Nothing further, thank you so much.
You have anything else, you're all done, okay, thank you. Okay, commission comments.
I don't have any comments.
Detroit leave?
I don't know.
You must ask him.
I mean, seriously, I was going to, you know, make him happy, while calling. I, as a person that works in healthcare, I agree with Medicaid expansion. I think the fear-mongering out there that comes with it from some people is not backed up with facts. So, some of the stuff that some of the, some of the people claim that comes with Medicaid expansion with what it would allow in the state of Kansas just is simply not true. So, but anyway, I, I'm, as a healthcare worker, absolutely in support of Medicaid expansion. I've seen what it's done. I see what it does to where I currently work, and I see what Medicare's trying to do to where I currently work, and I also see what it does to the hospitals that are there in Kansas City, and Mr. Schallenberger is exactly right, hospitals don't make money. I know people think that's crazy, and I know people think they do, but Mr. Schallenberger is exactly right, they don't make money. I also agree with him that Medicaid expansion, if it happened, we would not have our doors being knocked on for a hospital to be reopened. Would it help if somebody came? Sure, sure. But we do need REH, which is the quickest in path to a rural emergency, to something, to an emergency room plus a few rooms. And Senator Moran introduced a bill that changed the date, that all-important date, from 2020 to 2015. No idea when it will be voted on. I would be really surprised if it was voted on very quickly. But anyway, but that's, you know, that's an important, I think Senator Moran listened to people. He listened to everybody's phone calls that were made. I know that his person said that they had received lots of phone calls from the public, but he listened, and I want to thank him for that. You know, that's, and I hope they can get that passed in Washington. I, you know, they seem to be deadlocked on lots of stuff, but maybe they can get it passed, you know. Anyway, that's it.
Okay. He just said what I was going to say. Thank you, Senator Moran, for introducing that bill. That will change things. If we can get it passed, it certainly will improve our pathway to healthcare. Thank you, Senator Moran. Anything else, gentlemen?
Hm?
And a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and second, in discussion, all in favor, aye. Thank you, everyone, for coming.